All righty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 9th, meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. We will call to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Bridegum.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Dovin.
President.
Councilmember Klaufenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Wim Pinalosa.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tran.
Yeah.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. All right, may I ask Assistant City Manager Matt West to do the invocation, and then followed by Councilmember Bridegum to do the pledge allegiance?
Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we gather here today, let us draw inspiration from all parts of our community, where diversity is our strength and unity is our foundation. Let this meeting commence with a commitment to decisions that advance the well-being of every individual in our community. Together, let us continue to strive towards excellence in serving the best interests of the citizens of Garden Grove. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Can everyone remove their hats, face the flag, hand over heart begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual for liberty and justice alone.
All righty, we will start with presentations. We do have a couple. We have a community spotlight in recognition of the district winners and runners-up of this, the city's home beautification program called Garden Grove Gems.
All right, tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize the district winners and runners-up of the city's home beautification program, Garden Grove Gems, which honors local homeowners for their home's outstanding curb appeal. Earlier this evening, the mayor and city council held a brief reception to meet and congratulate the 12 winning homeowners from each of our six districts. Their journey to becoming a Garden Grove Gem began in April when Garden Grove homeowners self-nominated their homes by completing an online application and submitting a recent photo of their home. Later in May, the public voted for their favorite homes from the city's six districts. It is now my pleasure to introduce and congratulate the winners and runners-up of the Third Annual Garden Grove Gems. When I call your name, please come forward for a certificate of recognition, followed by a group photo with the city council. First, we are going to spotlight the first inductees to the Garden Grove Gems Hall of Fame who received this distinction by being three-time winners. From District Four, congratulations to Irene and Mitch Churnis Magna. You could please come up. All right, now we'll begin with District One winner, Verner and Sylvester Chumley. District Two winner Bonnie and Ellie Mazahari. District Two runner-up, Jose Perez. District Three runner-up, Mary Talbot. Sorry, I know we're getting a little crowded up here. District Four runner-up, Michelle Hokey. District Five winner Patrick and Gigi Sullivan. District Five runner-up, Mary and Mark Chichen. And District Six winner Dorothy Wilson and Mike Bowers. And lastly, District Six runner-up Alma and Lupita Salazar, attending on behalf of their parents, Jose and Maria Salazar. The city applauds your dedicated efforts in making your homes Garden Grove Gems and keeping our community looking its very best. Somehow, we're gonna get a photo.
Yeah, they usually do, try to fit everyone in there. And then Christopher's gonna take your, Christian's gonna take your picture.
Thank you.
Stand over here.
You guys online?
Yeah, why don't you guys welcome in?
Short people.
Are we all gonna fit?
I have to do another row. Have to go in and do another row.
Yeah, we can do a...
Try and squeeze in a little bit. Everyone looking over here, one, two, three. One, two, and three.
That was probably a video.
This is a video.
Go Jazz.
We'll see you next year.
Yeah, we do.
They look with one name on the plaque.
Oh, the picture?
Yeah.
You know why? Probably because I submitted it.
Oh.
Thank you for keeping up the pride of the neighborhood.
One more time.
I live on Black Mirror, that's why I asked.
They want one just like that? Okay.
For all the gems people, you guys are welcome to take off now. It'd be a good time to do it, because otherwise, after this, we'll start filling potholes and approving contracts and doing that kind of stuff. You're welcome to stay, but I just don't want to bore you if you don't feel obligated like you gotta stay. All right, second presentation is July 4th Police Department Deployment Update, as presented by the Garden Grove Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and councilmembers. As stated previously, we had a robust deployment for the 4th of July. I will state this, we did have a significant incident that occurred that pulled some resources from our efforts, but all in all, I'm happy to report the following to you. Year-over-year, when we look back at 2023 to 2024, we received 123 fireworks dispatch calls this year compared to 160 in 2023, which represents a 23% decrease. Obviously, we also were worried about projectiles being a large part of the problem this year during the 4th of July deployment. We did have four officers assigned specifically to the west side of Garden Grove, where we seemed to have a lot of activity for that type of projectile from our community, and it seemed to make an impact. We only had two calls for service for projectiles the whole evening. Officers did go there and try to document the incident, but neither of the parties wanted an arrest to be made or even a report, but we still documented that the projectiles were thrown at individuals that did not want it. So it seemed to have an impact. I think our messaging was well-received this year. We also went and took it a little bit further, and, you know, we start receiving fireworks calls usually a few days before the 4th of July. So we looked at our overall from 2023, going from July 1st to July 5th, we had 235 calls, and this year, we only had 225. So that represented a 4% decrease. And when you're talking about administrative citations, to those who were firing off illegal fireworks, we issued 29 administrative sites, which is an increase of roughly 20% from last year. And again, I think that number would've been higher, but we did have an incident that took a significant amount of resources away. That was a priority for all of us in our police department and our community. But all in all, no major significant mishaps or anything like that that we were made aware of from the community, as far as any injuries as a result of fireworks or anything of that magnitude. So we were happy with the efforts by our police officers and our community, just looking out for each other. That concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Colleague, just from, just from us, not from the public, sir.
Oh, okay. Cause I have to do House, House Street for me.
Sir, you'll have, you'll have a chance under oral communication talk, but it's not a, it's not a dialogue.
Yeah, I have a question for the city council over here.
Colleagues, questions, comments?
I have a comment. Just thank you for all the efforts you guys did, especially with the projectile things. I've got numerous complaints, and I know a lot of community members were upset about, about it. We've had some people sent to the hospital, and I know one woman had a miscarriage because she got pummeled out of a golf cart with water balloons, and it's getting really bad. So I'm really, really thankful that you guys are making that a focus, and, and we're seeing some improvement with that. Only two. I heard it was way more tame than previous years. I think that's largely due to your social media and your messaging, letting people know that, that police will be looking for that. And so, yeah, thank you for all your efforts, not just on the night of, but leading up to. And, and I do know that, you know, that 20-something fireworks citations, but I guess you had an incident that took it away. I mean, I go back to the day when we used to get 80, 90 of them written, you know, on, on 4th of July, but I know times have changed and things are a little more difficult to, to do. But with that being said, good job for you and the entire Garden Grove Police Department.
Thank you, we appreciate that. And I, I won't under, understate the fact that that incident took a significant amount of resources. That was my call. It was a high priority, and I'm a, that call is still under investigation, so I will not comment about it tonight, but I know you guys were notified of that incident.
Very similar feedback in term of, thank you for the effort that leading to the event. I did have a couple resident was speaking that they really enjoyed the firework and the information that you sent out ahead, and that they were asking if they could do fireworks for the new year at the party or whatever, but that's something separate. But just want to say, thank you. And I know that a lot of you was there during the holiday, and just want to make sure it's safe for the city. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Chief. Much appreciated. All right, we will move on to oral communications. We've got several cards, starting with Mark Chichen. Award winner, Mark Chichen.
My wife. I just, I'm the gopher. Help her. I didn't get the nom.
Oh, she did.
Anyways, I'm up here, I'm ticked off at you guys. You guys put in a bike lane. You guys ruined the traffic's flow. I don't know what you guys are thinking, but you're going for the money. The, oh, we get this grant money, so let's put these bike lanes in, and nobody rides bicycles. You can't find anybody on the road. You go out, any, and I'm in Stephanie's district, and she voted for it. There's nobody, nobody rides a bike, and I've never, I don't see them. Ever since you guys put them in on Ninth Street, you put them in on West Street, no bikes. Why do you go screw all the citizens in the city? Because you want some money to do something else. I don't understand it. You guys just don't pay attention to the citizens who live here. You did it on your own, you figure, okay, they voted you in, you're representing them, you vote for it, but you don't ask the citizens what they think, and you went ahead and did it anyway. I, I don't, I just don't understand this at all. You guys took the grant money, correct? And that, is that what the money is what drew you to do something like this? The money to do it so the citizens can't drive on the streets? There's more cars on the road than there are two, three bicycles every now and then, now and then. Since you guys put them in on West Street, it's very hard to get out when the traffic is going, it's one lane, and it's from Chapman almost all the way to Orangewood, and you can't get out if you're trying to cross traffic. You have to wait. You gotta wait. Creates a problem. But it's money, it's all about money. You guys just wanna line your pockets and do whatever with the money, but you don't care about the citizens. When I say, and you're smiling, Steve, and I say, you're laughing because you are using the money for whatever other reasons, but you don't think about the citizens who are doing it, who have to drive on the road. You ask the police officers when they're driving down the road and you got one lane going, and you go, two lanes works a lot better. It flowed great until you guys did that. I just don't understand what's going on. And there's, is there any comment on why?
This, the oral communication is just to address councils, so it's actually not a conversation, not a dialogue.
Oh, so you won't respond then? Okay, well, I'm addressing you saying, I don't like it.
Yeah, we hear you.
And I'm sure there's a lot of other people out there.
We hear you, and it's not about the money.
Well, you take grant money, yes. If you didn't have the grant money in front of you, you'd have never striped the cities with those bike lanes. I'm almost positive of that. If you take, and you, I don't know how many other citizens are out there, but they don't come forward because maybe they're afraid to, or they don't want to talk publicly. What can I say? I'm saying it publicly. You guys screwed all the citizens of Garden Grove by doing that bike lane. Thank you.
I don't ride bikes either because it's not safe.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, you called it, yeah.
Good evening, council and city staff. I have a couple of things I want to bring up. The first one is speeding in the residential areas. I've been living in my current address for 25 years. Things weren't always that bad. Speed limit's 25 miles an hour. People are going 35, 40 miles an hour during all, all times of the day. Doesn't matter. Young, old, doesn't matter. Everyone's speeding. I did put in a request to the city's website three times, I think it was four times, and they did send out a speed reader about a month ago. One week, they did it for facing east, the other week, they did it facing west. Well, it worked for that, those two weeks, only in that direction. So one side was slowing down, and the other side was keep, kept on going. And then when they switched it, same thing happened again. So it's dangerous. I know a lot of the material that the city sends out, what they talk about is safety for the community, in the, in the community and the neighborhoods. I think we, as citizens of Garden Grove, should have at least that. I don't know what the answer is. I did put a delineator out there on the street that says "slow" on it with three American flags. I think it's slowing them down a little bit. Okay? But something needs to be done. You all heard, watched the news this past weekend, right? You saw what happened. There are other circumstances that came into play as well. But still, it's not safe to ride your bikes, it's not safe to be walking your children on the street, on the sidewalk. Sometimes you have to cross in the residential, especially if you have children and then they want to visit their friend across the street. I live off of Brookhurst. People come off of Brookhurst doing 35, 40 miles an hour, and they think they can continue doing that. So I hope you take this more than just a grain of salt and do something about it. The other issue is the 4th of July, the fireworks, illegal fireworks. I don't think, from my perspective, things have toned, toned down from last year or years past, especially when you live in the middle of it. It's the same. You know, it's like, you know, doing 100 miles an hour and then doing 120, what's the difference? 20 miles an hour. You're still speeding. So I don't know, again, I don't know what the answer is. I know you doubled the fines, you put out more police officers out there, but I don't see any, any, any deterrent as far as people lighting illegal fireworks. I have a wood shake roof. Okay? My neighbor has a wood shake roof. You can only imagine what we have to deal with. Not just 4th of July, but the two, three weeks before and the two, three weeks after 4th of July. Sure, if you guys go home, you probably hear some going home. Right? So please, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I've got a couple issues. One of them has to do with my own apartment complex. Been trying to get code enforcement to come out, but is there a code enforcement? Nobody ever calls back. Nobody's even called. I got pictures where the stairs, the balcony's about to fall. Can we get somebody out there, please? About the women's club, they're partying at night. And about the social security, they're partying all weekend and drug dealing. I got video, I got pictures. The riverbed that goes through there, people are getting stuck down there. They can't even get out of the riverbed. I mean, I got more physicalness, what does it take? The security guard, Allied, I think, is the one that takes care of the mall? They got one guard taking care of that whole mall. When Walmart's got a security guard in a car, I think the mall should have at least a guard and a car, or maybe two guards, because it's getting really crazy over there, especially behind the 24-hour fitness, the social security, the riverbed. Again, I got pictures of people down trying to get out of the riverbed and all the stuff and supplies. In fact, yesterday, they were handing supplies down to go underneath the bridge. And the party that went on at the women's club? I'd like to know how that goes on, on weekends and stuff like that. They're tearing the fences up, they're tearing the fence, and we call the police? No show. I made a joke with the officer, and he jumped on my butt, and I apologized, and he didn't accept my apology. I'm sorry for that. And you guys can tell him for that. Let him know if he can't accept apology for someone who's just kidding with him. We don't need officers like that, and I don't want him in my neighborhood. We'll take care of things ourselves, I guess. Are you guys gonna step it up and bring some more officers in? Please? The fence for the riverbed, especially, we've gotta get it to stop the people from going down in there. Put another security guard in the mall. I don't think that's asking too much. I think the mall can afford at least a security guard, or at least, I mean, that gentleman's on foot. One man for the whole mall, and Walmart's got at least a car. Please? Thank you.
No, I haven't started yet. Will you start the clock over, please? Thank you. I'm Nicholas Dibs. I have two items. As a teacher and an educator, I care about students and their safety. We need a youth advisory commission, or a, a youth advisory commission is what we need. And I've been asking the council to please consider this. In the early wisdom of Garden Grove, the earlier councils had one. We had a youth commission and Youth in Government Day, and that went on for a number of years, including when I was in high school at Pacifica, and I participated as a member of the city council as a, as a high school student. But today, with the Surgeon General warning and others warning about the harmful effects of, of being on the internet for the children, and, and the harm that's being done, and the fact that we do need safe routes to schools, we need Hope Squad, we need a whole bunch of things in this, it, as it's, as you know, it takes a village to raise a child, and Garden, the city is part of that village, and the partnership that you can exert with the school district and with the parents and with the community members is very important. This youth advisory commission is needed now more than ever. The, the data is in, the articles are in, the news reports are in, all kinds of stuff is out there. Mr. Craig Durfee has sent you multiple emails with information, and so have I, stating the obvious, that we need, we need a youth advisory group, and I'm gonna say something to the mayor, because he's being termed out. And mayor, you, you founded the college graduates reception, which I helped co-sponsor for a number of years. I'd like to propose that you start a youth commission and you be the chair of that commission, that you help our community as the former mayor, soon-to-be former mayor at some point, and be involved in the education and improving the, the safety of the, of the students and of the, of the community. There is a lot that needs to be done, and we see in other cities, Huntington Beach has a youth commission, Newport Beach, other cities have this. It's an advisory, it's not, it, it's an advisory group to help build bridges of understanding and to bring positive change and to implement safe routes, safe routes to schools and other programs to help get these students off of the internet where they're being cyberbullied and so on and so on. There's a place for a youth advisory commission, and it's an, to help improve our city and our community. Look at the emails that I've been sending. I, myself and others have been sending you emails about the, of why this is needed. And mayor, I, I asked you, why don't you be the chair of the first youth commission that could be reestablished? The early councils had this, and then it got thrown out, or not thrown out, but discontinued, and so we need this to continue. And I pushed for Youth in Government Day, and I got back in 2018. Now it's time to bring our youth commission back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak who did not submit a card? Come on up, please. Yeah, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, city council, and our awesome city staff, and I mean that sincerely, I'd like to make a further comment about speed. As I mentioned in the last city council meeting, the city of Anaheim did a study, and they are dropping 100, they're reducing the speed on, I believe, 158 segments of street, and they're keeping it the same on almost that many more. But not one street in Anaheim had the speed limit raised. Not one. Now, I had occasion to be southbound on Brookhurst the other day, I think it was last Friday, and I turned eastbound on Orangewood, and I don't know why I have, never noticed this before, but as you go by, as you approach Euclid, I forgot the name of the school that's on the left there, it's a big campus, it's on both sides of the street. As soon as you get to Euclid on Orangewood, as soon as you cross Euclid, I have never noticed this before, but the speed limit has been increased to 40 miles an hour in that stupid little congested part of the street. There's a Circle K and a Londer Bed, there's deliveries, there's an emergency medical care on the right, and you go about, I don't know, 50, 60 yards, and there's a stop sign, a three-way stop sign, and there used to be some flowers there because a young boy going on tour from a school got killed at that intersection, because people don't see the stop sign. Now, I want you to think about this. That speed limit, as soon as you cross Euclid, it's up from 35 to 40 miles an hour. Anaheim is gonna change their part of it to 30. And then you get over to Ninth Street, you go north on Ninth, it's 35, you go right, it's 40. It is ridiculous to think that that little piece of Orangewood is 40 miles an hour, it's one lane in each direction, and a bicycle lane on either side, apartments everywhere, that is, that's gotta be the definition of just ridiculous. So to the people who say that the bicycle lanes are a pain in the neck, I wouldn't get in those bicycle lanes either, not with people speeding up and down the streets. Who, who would take their life in their hands and get out in the bicycle lane when people behave in that manner? I wouldn't. I used to, but I'm not going to now. I think I've gotten smarter as I've gotten older. But I just want to say, all you people that want to see what a city can do with the speed limits needs to go to voiceofoc.org, look at that article, click on the link, and it'll tell you every street where they're changing the speed limit. And trust me, it ain't up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will close oral communications, go on to written communications. We do have two items listed.
Item three is a consideration of a written request from Korean-American Seniors Association of Orange County for cosponsorship of the facility rental fees for use of the Community Meeting Center on September 13th, 2024, and December 13th, 2024. And Ms. Belio is here to give that report.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. Staff received a written request on behalf of the Korean-American Seniors Association of Orange County requesting cosponsorship of the facility rental fees for use of the Community Meeting Center A and B rooms on September 13th and December 13th, 2024, both bookings from 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM. These facility use requests would serve approximately... These facility use requests would serve approximately 300 senior citizens, including members of the city's H. Lewis Lake Senior Center, to celebrate the Korean Mid-Autumn Harvest Festival and to commemorate the celebration of Senior Day. The association is a 501(c)(3) organization established in 1977 in Garden Grove. The organization has about 1,500 regular members and currently provides welfare, food, and education services to approximately 3,000 seniors in Orange County. Staff has verified that the association is in good standing with the California State Secretary Office and the IRS. The in-kind contribution to co-sponsor the two dates requested for use of the Community Meeting Center A and B rooms by a nonprofit organization is $1,343.50 per use for a total amount of $2,687. It is recommended that the city council consider this cosponsorship request from the Korean-American Seniors Association of Orange County. This concludes staff's report and we have association representatives here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Colleagues?
Just a quick question. Is the event open to the public?
Sorry. I'm not sure if the association wants to come up and answer it, but from my understanding, it is open to senior citizens in the Garden Grove community. The maximum capacity will be 300. So I'm sure they're gonna have some type of registration system when they advertise the event.
Okay. I'm satisfied. Thank you. Motion in a second? Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, item four.
Item four is a consideration of a written request from Disneyland Resort to conduct the 2025 Disneyland Half Marathon on Sunday, February 2nd, 2025. And again, Ms. Palio is here to give that report.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of the city council. Staff received a written request on behalf of the Disneyland Resort to use city streets to conduct the 2025 Disneyland Half Marathon event on Sunday, February 2nd, 2025. The proposed route would mimic the very popular Star Wars Half Marathon route that was used in the Half Marathon events in 2015, 2016, and 2017. These events began at the Disneyland Resort encompassing various streets in Anaheim and Garden Grove. The course route affected streets in the vicinity of Harbor Boulevard, Garden Grove Boulevard, Main Street, Euclid Street, and Chapman Avenue. These previous events came to halt after 2017 due to the Disneyland Park renovations. The preliminary proposed route outlines the city streets that will be used to conduct this event, which would include full and partial street closures for a limited period of the time beginning at 3:00 AM to approximately 9:00 AM. The final route will be determined in partnership with the city of Garden Grove Police and Public Works Departments and will ensure maximum exposure to the city, the safest route for runners, and the least possible impact to residents and businesses. If the proposal is approved, staff will prepare a formal agreement between the city and the Disneyland Resort. The agreement will include the following provisions. Disneyland Resort will reimburse the city for all of the city's costs attributable to the operation of the Half Marathon event. The Disneyland Resort will be responsible for notifying residents and businesses regarding the roads that will be experiencing closures, as well as the hours for these closures. The Disneyland Resort will be responsible for removal of all the trash along the route of the Half Marathon event. And then Disneyland Resort and its contractors and vendors must comply with insurance requirements, including designation of the city of Garden Grove as an additional insurer. Approval of the proposed Half Marathon event will not have a financial impact to the city. Disneyland Resort would be required to reimburse the city for all direct costs. It is recommended that the city council consider the written proposal from the Disneyland Resort to conduct the 2025 Disneyland Half Marathon event on Sunday, February 2nd, 2025. And if approved, authorize the city manager to prepare and execute a formal agreement between the city and Disneyland Resort for use of city streets to conduct the Half Marathon event. That concludes staff's report and we do have representatives here from the Disneyland Resort if you have any questions for them.
Thank you, Janet.
Yeah.
Good comment.
Go ahead, George.
It just, I think it's an awesome thing that the Disney marathon is actually running through the streets of Garden Grove. So I, and at no cost to us. It's being fully funded by Disney. And I kinda like the idea of maybe seeing Minnie and Mickey running around the Garden Grove neighborhoods, so anyway.
Might be goofy.
Might be goofy, yeah. With that being said, I will make the motion.
I'll second.
Joe, go ahead, Joe.
Can we have the representative come up here? I do have a couple of questions. First one, it's easy. What's your anticipated participant numbers? How much, how many people yours?
So my, I'm Carol Lee Darnell, I'm government relations with the Disneyland Resort. I also have with me Katie Broadwell. She is actually on the race team. That seems like a more race-related question.
Perfect.
So defer to her.
We'll have about 14,000 participants.
Okay, a second question and last. Because we were told that you're going to inform the residents of the event, how do you intend to do that?
We've done mailings before. We can communicate, use your social networks if that's working with the city for the residents to follow. We've worked with Anaheim for our past races to do so and it's worked really well to put that message out. So any other suggestions you have, we are happy to follow.
Thank you very much.
I do have one question. Are we gonna actually see any Disney characters in the race?
There will be plenty of people dressed up.
Okay.
There will be plenty of characters. Plenty of characters.
We got enough characters in Garden Grove.
All right. Did we, we had a motion in about 10 seconds, right? Okay. So we'll call the vote. I'll just comment that I'm excited to see Disney come in and sprinkle in some of that Disney magic here in Garden Grove. We appreciate you guys. Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty. Next, we will recess and conduct successor agency business. So Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member, Member Bradigan?
Here.
Member Tran? Member Devin?
Present.
Member Clovenstein?
Here.
Member Wayne Pinalozza?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neill?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here.
All righty, we already did oral communications. Consent calendar is basically just receive and file the minutes.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters? Seeing none, we will adjourn and go back to city council. So reconvene city council, that takes us on to the consent calendar. It's recommended that items five through 14 be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, moving right along to public hearings. We've got several listed. The first is item number 15.
Item number 15 is adoption of a resolution authorizing. Oh, I'm sorry, I have the wrong item. Item 15 is adoption of a resolution to confirm the annual levy of fiscal year 2024, '25, assessment for the downtown assessment district. And Ms. Veramontes is here to give that report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeri. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, tonight the city council is asked to hold public hearings for the city's street lighting and park maintenance districts and to adopt resolutions to, for the collection of assessments for the districts. The public hearings are required by law and their purpose is to hear testimony on the matter of annual assessments. Once the hearings are complete, the resolutions may be adopted. Should the resolutions pass, the required information will be forwarded to the county assessor for collection of the assessments. The assessments will raise approximately $1.3 million in street lighting revenues and $700,000 in park maintenance revenues. There are no increases to the assessment rates for last fiscal year. This concludes my report and I, as well as my consultant from Harrison Associates, are available to answer any questions.
All righty, thank you. Any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item 15? Seeing none, we will close public hearing. And then Terry, is there something you gotta do?
Yes, I do. So honorable mayor and city council members, at this time I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, the city clerk's office has received a total of zero protests. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. So there are 28 parcels in the downtown assessment district. As a result, there has not been a submitted of a majority protest.
Great. Colleagues?
Move it. Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, item 16.
Item 16 is adoption of resolutions confirming the annual levy of fiscal year 2024, '25 assessments for the Garden Grove Street Lighting District, the Garden Grove Street Lighting District Number 99-1, and the Garden Grove Park Maintenance District. And again, Ms. Veramontes is here to give that report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeri. Tonight, we have the final step in establishing the assessment for our downtown assessment district for fiscal year 24, '25. The assessment remains the same from previous years. In accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the remaining action for the city council is to hold a public hearing and to adopt a resolution confirming the assessments for the district. Should the resolution pass, all information will be forwarded to the county for collection of assessments. This concludes my report and I'm available for questions.
Any colleagues, any questions before we open? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone to speak on item number 16? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Terry?
Honorable mayor and city council members, at this time I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, the city clerk has received a total of zero protests for District 99-1. There are 343 parcels. As a result, there has not been a submitted of a majority protest. As well as the city's park maintenance district, which has 35,715 parcels. There has not been a majority protest. And that's all the information that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues?
I'll move it.
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty. And Jared Harden has been patiently waiting for item 17. So, item 17.
Item 17 is a consideration of an amendment to the vehicle rebate program participation agreements with certain dealerships to extend the term for an additional five years. And Mr. Blodgett is here to give that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Tonight, we're conducting a public hearing to consider amendment to the vehicle rebate program and the participation agreements. So this program is part of the Garden Grove Big Program by Garden Grove. And it came about in 2019 when we entered into agreements with the six Garden Grove dealerships, including Kia, Nissan, Hyundai, Chevrolet, Toyota Place, and Volkswagen of Garden Grove. And this was basically a $500 rebate to Garden Grove residents, an incentive to buy cars and purchasing Garden Grove, and also a measure to help the impacts of Measure O taxes on the auto dealers. So basically, the impact, the economic impact of this program has been since 2018, we had 561 employees in those auto dealers that I just mentioned with $38 million in payroll. And by 2023, we increased that to 565 employees with $56 million in Garden Grove payrolls. Overall, the VRP program has retained jobs and generated 1.8 million in gross revenue, in which 1.3 million was rebated to those Garden Grove residents. The city did collect $505,000 of that to the city general fund. And we do have an AB 562 report for compliance included in this report. So the city and the participating dealerships are proposing amendment to the agreements to continue the mitigation of that 1% additional Measure O tax for the dealerships to be competitive and also retain jobs. And the VRP encourages residents of Garden Grove businesses to shop locally, preventing sales tax leakage to other communities around us. So to go into a new agreement with the, what the dealers have asked for another five years will cost the city approximately $1.45 million over the five-year term. And this will be budgeted in '24, '25 fiscal year, approximately $275,000 will be rebated to the dealerships. And for future funding, will be requested through additional appropriation through the budget process. So it's recommended the city council conduct the public hearing to consider the five-year term extension and the corresponding AB 562 report. Authorize city manager to execute amendments to the agreements in a form approved by city attorney, including minor modifications as appropriate and any pertinent documents necessary to effectuate and implement the set agreements. That concludes my report. We do have members from our auto dealerships, I think there's three here to speak on behalf of this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Any clarifying questions before we open?
Just one quick question. The $500 rebate is for Garden Grove residents. But does it also apply, because I know some of these lots have used car associated with it, they sell used cars. Is it only on the new cars or is it also new and used cars?
That is correct, it's for new car sales.
Just new cars?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll open the public hearing. I do have a card from Jared Harden.
I gotta raise this up so you guys can hear me. Good evening, Mayor Jones and council members. My name is Jared Harden. I'm one of the owners of Garden Grove Kia. With me tonight is Richard Luango with Garden Grove Nissan and Ahid Karachi from Garden Grove Hyundai. I would like to begin by thanking you and the city staff all for the work and effort to put into making the vehicle rebate program a success for the Garden Grove residents, the dealerships, as well as the city. Over the past five years, 2,600 Garden Grove residents have received 1.3 million in rebates to shop local and offset the sales tax increase on the purchase of new vehicles. This has helped retain 1.8 million dollars in sales tax revenue to the city and retained 565 jobs with a payroll of 56 million. Sorry to repeat, Greg. While sales to the residents have fallen since higher sales tax rate went into effect, the vehicle rebate program has reduced the impact by roughly 50%. On behalf of all the Garden Grove dealers, we respectfully request that you continue the program for another five-year term, since it has proven to be beneficial to Garden Grove residents, the dealers, and the city. We also look forward to continuing our discussion to include leases and used vehicles in the rebate program. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? All righty. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Colleagues?
Quick comment on, 2,600 people have taken advantage of this. That means 2,600 Garden Grove residents have saved over $500. I think that's great. I mean, it, you know, especially when you look at that 500, I mean nowadays, that's a tank of gas. But, but honestly. Don't have a Humvee, but, so, yeah. But, you know, it's awesome that, you know, the city, the auto dealerships, all are kinda working together to give this advantage to, to our residents or this benefit. Yeah, $500 again doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when you compound that on the interest and everything, on the price of the car, you know, it's significant, it really is. It adds up. And so, I mean, I know times are tough for everyone nowadays and so, you know, every little bit helps, so I think this is great. And with that, I'll make a motion.
I'll second with comments.
Yeah.
Cindy, go ahead. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, I appreciate that, you know, you guys come here and speak about it. And the thing I really like is that our residents actually get to be benefited from it. And also, I look at the, you know, the payroll or the job that create, so it makes me really happy about that, so thank you. That's it.
As a proud driver of a Kia from Garden Grove, $500 is a lot, especially if you drive a hybrid plug-in, George, instead of a gas guzzler. So I happily make the second and just say I'm very grateful for this program as someone who benefited from it. I know many other people. Most of my friends are driving cars that we all had in college.
I know many other people, most of my friends are driving cars that we all had in college, so the 10 years are up now, and we were all looking for cars, and I kept reminding all of them, buy in Garden Grove.
I just want to take this opportunity to comment also, because I don't think it gets out there enough that this is available. So when people in Garden Grove, this is a good opportunity for us to talk about it for a few minutes, to say, hey, if you're thinking about buying a car, think about Garden Grove, the city you live in, because there's a $500 rebate, right? So just getting the word out to people, hey, you know, if you're buying those model cars that we have dealerships here in the city, think about that first, because you're gonna provide those jobs in Garden Grove, and you're also gonna have a rebate to yourself for $500. So appreciate it, looking forward to doing this for another five years.
Motion and a second. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Alrighty, that takes us on to Commission Committee Matters. Item 18 is Appointment to Vile Vacancy on the Planning Commission, and I would, is there anything you need to say first?
No.
Okay. I would like to nominate Chris Beard for the Appointment to Planning Commission. Motion and a second. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, congratulations to Chris Beard. Takes us on to items for consideration, item number 19.
Item number 19 is award a contract to Karasoff Technology Corporation to provide a cloud-based telephone system. Mr. Rao is here to give that report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. The item before you this evening is to award a contract to Karasoff Technology Corporation for cloud-based telephone services from Zoom. The current phone system is an on-premise system that is out of warranty and at its end of life. After spending the past 18 months testing a variety of solutions, the IT department chose Zoom. We chose Zoom primarily due to its end-user experience. The city already utilizes Zoom for teleconferencing and cooperation. Phone services are just an extension of the current application. Training and change management will be minimal, and there will be no need to install, maintain, or troubleshoot a new app on all city network devices. The contract is for six years, with the first year being at cost-free. The contract will also allow us to eliminate our current Zoom agreement, which costs the city over $16,000 per year. The city is able to execute the contract utilizing the NASPO Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. It is recommended that the City Council approve dispensing with bidding requirement pursuant to Garden Grove Municipal Code 2.50.060E, which allows the city to use cooperative purchasing agreements that have gone through a competitive process. Awarded a contract with Karasoff Technology Corporation in the amount of $511,670.70 provide a cloud-based telephone system, and authorize the City Manager or designee to execute the contract on behalf of the city and make minor modifications as appropriate. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Hon, go ahead, Joe.
Three questions, the first and second is part and parcel of each other, and the third one is separate. First is the, what is the date of implementation if we approve, and is there a phasing out period or overlapping between the previous service and the new?
There will be a gradual phasing in and out, so we'll take, we've already, we've done a test group of employees with this, with 30 employees have done it, and we'll gradually by batch, so no one will be out of phone service, so we'll be in a blended environment until we're completely done. Probably be a few months before we're 100%.
By end of year?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, third question. Since it's cloud-based, is it gonna be stored on a database, so all the conversations will be stored and available or not?
We've never stored conversations, so voicemails will be stored in the cloud, and Zoom has a feature where if you get a voicemail, it'll be emailed to you, so it'll be part of our email archive as well.
So there is a possibility of recalling the message, and it is stored?
Yes, it is stored.
Okay, I just want people to know that, because there's a public record, and if somebody requests a Freedom of Information Act, they may obtain it.
Our email has an archiver to it, so every voicemail goes to the email system, so it's there.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I, web cloud-based systems, telephone systems and me just don't get along. I'm really leery of them. With my experience, when the internet goes down, you have no phones. And it just, and so I get leery about putting all your eggs into one basket, so to speak, especially with our new EOC. You know, you have an emergency, a solar flare, whatever, a flood, your internet goes out, and now there's no communication. So I just want to make sure that we're not going that route with at least the new police department and the new EOC, Emergency Operations Center, that has to work in bad situations when things aren't working. Do, I mean, are we limiting ourselves, or are we, are we, you know, then, I know the old telephone lines are protected. Back in the 70s, they spent billions of dollars of federal government, and that's why whenever there's an emergency, they say plug into an old landline, because it'll still work, you know. So I just wondered, will we still have those kind of options available, or are we, is this, yeah, everything's just going to this web-based system?
Happy to address that, and that risk is well stated. So the old system we're talking about is called POTS lines, which is plain old telephone system. And so we do have a number of those lines already, spread about the various city facilities. We also have 27 fax lines that are also in that system that can easily be converted to phone lines. We are working with our EOC coordinator to install more of those POTS lines. So it's a risk that we understand, and it's a work in progress. But, yeah, we are, we already have those lines, and we're going to be installing more.
Okay, so it's not an all or nothing, we'll still have?
Yeah, we'll still have those.
Okay.
Yeah, and so our, to be clear, our current system right now uses the internet as well, so it's, but we, that's why we have those emergency lines in place already.
Thank you.
I have a question. I don't want to get too technical on what we have or don't have, but do we have a combination of hard landlines, like T1 lines, and fiber, or do we utilize both, or is it all? Do we have any fiber?
For phones, right now, it's all over the internet with a very expensive device that's just in our server room. Yeah, so, but for data, yeah, we have a mix of things for data, but for phones, it's all internet.
I'll second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item number 20.
Number 20 is award a contract to All American Asphalt for various residential streets rehabilitation in 2024. City project number CP1399293, and Mr. Kim is here to give that report.
Palmer. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, tonight, City Council is being asked to award the contract to All American Asphalt for the construction of the various residential streets rehabilitation 2024 project. This project will include Fern Street from Garden Grove Boulevard to Stamford Avenue, Stamford Avenue from Fern Street to Dale Street, O'Kesha Avenue from Fern Street to Dale Street, Monroe Street from Stamford Avenue to Lamson Avenue, and some sections of the adjoining streets. Each street will be addressed with a different rehab measures to properly manage the unique circumstances. This project will involve coal milling, roadway excavation, removing and reconstructing failed pavement areas, asphalt paving, slurry seals, adjustment of utility covers to finish grade, restoration of traffic strapping, pavement marking and markers, and reestablishment of the centerline ties and monuments. Four bids were received and opened by the City Clerk's Office on June 11th, 2024. The lowest bidder was All American Asphalt, with a total bid of $699,164. This bid amount is within the current project budget. The licenses and references of the contractor have been reviewed and verified by staff, and all other documentation is in order. Should the Council approve the contract today, the construction can begin in August and be completed by October of this year. This project is included in the fiscal year 2024/25 Adapted Capital Improvement Plan Budget, and is funded by Gas Tax and Community Development Block Grant Funds. It is recommended that the City Council award the contract to All American Asphalt in the amount of $699,164 for the construction of the various residential streets rehab 2024 project, and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement with All American Asphalt and make a minor modification as needed thereto on behalf of the city. This concludes the staff report, and staff is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Joe?
Good questions for you, Mr. Kim. Thank you for the presentation. One, the kind of combined mileage, if you have an estimate of how much miles are we covering?
I think it's 10 under 2 miles.
About 2 miles?
Yeah.
Second question, have we contracted with this contractor before?
Yes, we have, sir. We have used them many times in the past for the street projects.
And they've known to be reliable, and their bid is reasonably low, that we have open and competitive bid?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'll move it.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, takes us on two matters. We have none listed, we'll go around the horn. George, anything?
Sure. One, we had a gentleman here upset about the bike lanes over there on 9th, and he accuses us all of bad faith and all that. I take exception to that, I actually voted no on that project, I just want that on the record. We also had a gentleman here talking about the speeds and the ridiculousness of going from 40 miles to a stop in like, you know, a couple 30, 40 feet, and, you know, changing speeds and all that. He had actually reached out via email a couple weeks ago, and staff had gotten back, and they are actually currently exploring possibly being able to reduce this now. So just, I want that on the record, staff is looking into the, what we can possibly do. I guess they've been in contact with Anaheim, like the gentleman said, and so hopefully we will see something happen there. Lastly, we recently got a Supreme Court decision, the Grants Pass decision, which allows local agencies now to enforce camping and other homeless-related ordinances. So I would like to agendize for the next meeting, and I know we're not gonna have one on the 23rd, so it won't be till August, but I'd like to get this on the agenda of the possibility of getting a ordinance for the city of Garden Grove in that regard, now that the Supreme Court has untied our hands. I think we should jump on this expeditiously, and so I'd like to get a second, so we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
This be to bring back a formal agenda, or would this be just like bringing back research to then eventually, I just want to make sure?
It would just allow us to agendize it for discussion?
Yeah, okay.
And then possible direction to the City Attorney if we decide we want to?
Okay. I'll second that.
And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Can we take action on that? Or do we just?
So if this is only for discussion?
Yeah, it's not a voting.
But you do, if you do take action, then we can do a little bit of research and have a more robust, you know, staff report. If there's no action, there won't be a staff report.
Let's go for just discussion at the next time, and then if there's something comes out of that.
Yeah, so if it's just discussion, then we don't need a formal action, we'll just agendize it per the council members' request.
Thanks. John?
Thank you. Briefly, just a few things that were brought up. I hope everybody enjoyed their 4th of July. I had a few complaints from residents, you know, the typical stuff, it's, you know, fireworks, and we do our best. A lot of our policing happens, you know, leading up to and after on the people that are selling bulk fireworks and things like that, and we do our best on the night of the Fourth. So again, congratulate the PD on, you know, having to deal with all they have to deal with, so I appreciate that, and we will keep dealing with that. We didn't have any major fires that evening that I'm aware of. And then also, I wanted to address some points that the Speaker brought up on District 2, specifically in the Gilbert-Chapman area. I'll personally reach out to everyone involved again on that area. I will actually go look at that staircase and get with our code enforcement and see if it needs to be red-tagged or whatever's going on, so I'll personally look into that. I'll also get with the other agencies regarding the riverbed, and then I will also get with the Women's Club to make sure they have a certificate on file for no trespassing law. And I just wanted to clarify, because the Speaker was talking about the women, they were partying at the Women's Club, it wasn't the women that were partying, it was, it was transients that had taken over their place, and it was over a holiday weekend, so, you know, they were getting away with a lot more than they would normally get away with. So we'll look into all those details again, and we're, it's a costly battle, as you guys, yeah, the women weren't partying, well, maybe they were, I don't know. It's a wild group. But anyway, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thanks, John. Cindy, Mayor brought Tim.
Yes, sir. Couple of things. So first, I want to say thank to the Garden Grove Community Foundation for starting the concert at the park. The first one was the Smoking Cobra. So I know that they took a lot of effort, and we have seen it many times, so we might just see it, but I see how they was there, they want to make sure they have all the stuff for little kids to play. Kid were there dancing, parent was sitting on the chair and listen to the music. So I just want to say thank you for doing the work. And the next one coming up is Taylor Nation at East Gate on July 11. So looking forward to come there, and hopefully our resident will come and enjoy. Our staff was there to support, so it was very nice to see that, it's something we do for the resident, and we was there to support. Second, just say congrats to the Chamber of Commerce for the gala, they did a great job, it was about innovative team, and some of the business, businesses was a work for different thing, and for District 3, we got the hostess business, so that was very nice. They did a great job with the team, and we, our, actually, some of our council went to the ribbon cutting for the seafood, seafood market. It was nice to see that some of the businesses open business in our city, and they love our city so much that they want to open the second and the third, and, you know, our council member came, and our staff came, Lisa came, and it was really nice and to hear how people compliment about how much they like our city, so make me really happy about that. So, and then, so we talked about the call earlier, the rebate, right? So make us happy, anytime that we vote something, that we give the money back to our resident, that make me happy, and I'm all for that. And then the bike issue. So I think when I vote for it, I'm thinking about, we at the council probably think we do something good to promote health, right? Doing something, you know, just have a bike lane for people to ride a bike, and I think our mayor and everyone here support that. But I don't, I want to know that when we did that, did we have community outreach for people to provide input? Does anyone remember? Sorry, I don't remember, but...
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, there was extensive outreach undertaken prior to the installation of the bike lane, that is typically part of the program and the funding that were received associated with that. I'll be happy to forward that to the council once again.
Thank you. You know, hearing that made me feel a little bit better too, because, like I said, we do everything with the heart and the soul to support, you know, the goodness for our city, but sometime, one thing like this, it make you wonder, like, did I do a right, did I make a right decision? So that was it, and then, of course, Gilbert and Chapman, that's actually next to my District 2, and so just want to say thank to our staff for approving the permit to demolish that one restaurant. So now, you know, in the past, the restaurant were vacant buildings, so you see graffiti and homeless people with the bike, you know, running around there, but now it's just, you know, empty, I mean, it's what demolish, so I'm happy that, to see some progress. That's it for me, sir.
Before I pass on to Joe, I'll just make a couple of quick comments on that. I mean, our bike and pedestrian master plan was well thought out for very many years, and put in place, we came up with a master plan called Pedals and Feet, and tried to think of how to connect the whole city through active transportation a whole different way. There's a whole lot of thought that went into safety, actually trying, attempting to slow down traffic on subarterial streets that had too high-speed traffic and push people to the larger arterials that are geared to accommodate more traffic. Those things have been accomplished, safe routes. Those things have been accomplished, safe routes to school for our children and just to promote active transportation in a world where e-bikes and e-scooters and all kinds of other hovercrafts and you name it are coming into play. And so it will take time to implement the infrastructure. There's a little consternation in the transition, but in the long run, I still wholeheartedly believe in what we're doing.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that and I think by doing that, we're gonna promote more of this in our city, but it's just, I just want to make sure that we did our diligent job. Thank you.
Cities that are walkable and bikeable are more desirable, hands down.
Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll just speak a little bit to the bike lanes because it seemed to be a one-off, but there may be other people who are opposed to it and possibly there may be a sunset clause where later on, if it's something that the majority of people are opposed, we may bring it back for reconsideration, although it might not be this, this council. But I appreciate the fact that George did abstain, so we do have differences of opinions and your feedback is welcome and we will take note of that. And if there's continued to be opposition, it's something we can reconsider. But I was supportive and I voted for it and I think it's a good idea. It's part of a reimagined Garden Grove. Last meeting, I was absent overseas and the meeting was run very well by Mayor Protem. I give a shout out to her because it was like under an hour. So maybe I should leave overseas more often. Every time I'm here, we go over an hour, so. Apologize for that, but we did receive a gut punch in Fourth of July, not something we expected. We can't talk about it yet. It's under investigation, but it was very painful and it did affect our policing for Fourth of July. And I, I wanna share with our residents because a lot of them are watching Channel Three like I did and I was out of town. But when I came back, I watched Channel Three, so I encourage everybody to watch our meetings on Channel Three. I'm against illegal fireworks. I, I like the fact that we're citing people. Some years I'm out of town, so I don't know how loud it gets, but this year I was in town the whole time and my cat freaked out. She was under the bed, okay? And it's not a good experience for seniors or pets or veterans. So I want those fines to be doubled if the same repeat offender, those fines. I, I want our police chief to really crack down on that. And this year, we kind of had a, an incident that pulled away a lot of our policing. But next year, if you continue to, with those illegal fireworks, really loud, really big explosions, our police will cite you and I want those numbers not to be twenty-five citation. If it has to be fifty or whatever, so people get the message. I'm not against celebration, celebratory fireworks, like in all of the holiday occasions, but these illegal fireworks have really annoyed me personally. I was home the whole time. It's unacceptable, so thank you for, police force for handling that. But people are watching at home, you will get fined, you will get caught. And if you're a repeat offender, I think the penalty should be harsher. We get update on Navigation Center. Thank you to our community manager and those numbers have reflected our level of service in all three cities, Westminster and Fountain Valley and Garden Grove. And the fact that we're temporarily housing people, it's, it's making a difference, I think, in our city. So hopefully we will be able to accommodate more clients or residents or I would call them temporarily housed or sheltered people. This year, the, the JEM was very exciting, the spotlight we had. I remember two years in a row when it was Garden Grove Pride. My house got a couple of awards and the certificate was on my refrigerator for a long, long time. And that's, that's very special. I think people who make the neighborhood more beautiful, that's part of our model, right? Plan, build, beautify. So the JEM's award tonight was very meaningful and it, it really raises the value of our community. And I've heard Garden Grove referred to as Golden Grove. I like that. I like that Golden Grove, right? So that's part of our beautification of the city. Lastly, I wanna thank the Corey American Senior Association for coming in and for booking our CMC venue. That's very welcoming. Hopefully it's open to the public. Obviously, there may be a registration process, but we're happy to accommodate and since they are a nonprofit, I give them a break on the, on the fees. That's it for me. Thank you very much. And I think we go dark, right? And city manager can let us know when we'll be back to convene our meetings. Lastly, congratulations to Chris Beard. I'm sure there'll be, we have a long list of applicants in all the different commissions, which is very welcoming. We have a deep bench to draw from and it's only four meetings out before we get to appoint new people to the commission. So it's not long for people who are on the waiting list. And again, thank you for your application and your willingness to serve. Thank you.
Stephanie? Kim?
Couple of comments. First, get your pens ready and make notes. I would like to have your feedback. If I don't hear from you, I'll vote how I want, but I'd like your feedback on propositions five, eight, thirty-three and thirty-six. Yes, I told you to get your pens ready. You don't listen to me. One more time. Five, eight, thirty-three and thirty-six. As I will be attending the State League Board meeting this Thursday and Friday and we will be taking action. Some of these items are contentious and we've gotten pros and cons, so I'd like to engage my colleagues to get their thoughts. I will also be talking to my Orange County colleagues for their feedback. As I don't just represent myself, I represent the entire delegation of Orange County. So if I don't hear from you, I will do as I please. So please let me know. Next one, the OCTA on street car, bridge, underpass area continues to be a thorn in my side. There's a lot of trash and debris and a lot of transient activity conspiring in that area. So if we could please have a follow-up conversation with OCTA. This is becoming a huge problem in my district and it has been the entire time that they've had construction there. So I'm actually very disappointed that I have to continue to bring it up. I think I wanna make a comment. I wasn't going to, but I will regarding bike paths. We did have someone who was genuinely really upset and also, you know, disparaged us in what we do as a council. We apply for grants to help save money so that we're not utilizing general fund dollars on projects and initiatives that we could receive grant funding for. As council member Bridingham always used to call me Grant Girl, you know that I love grants and when we can use grant money instead of our general fund dollars, I will a hundred percent support that effort. We don't have a lot of bicyclists because it's not safe to bike here. You saw, we've seen so many incidents, one just very recently of why it's not safe to bike. I don't personally like to ride bicycles and now that I have a broken tailbone, I don't know that I ever will want to ride a bike, but for those who do, there's no avenue in, for them to do so here. And the conversations around health and safety and walkable paths and safe bike lanes has been going on for as long as I've been on the council and I know that the mayor has championed that. I've done, participated in several walks in my district to take a look at how walkable it is and how safe it would be for bicyclists and it's just not. And so we have to think about that in the future as we're getting mandated to go green, to go electric. Not everyone can afford that and we need a variety of different modes of transportation and that includes bicycles. So I resent the fact that someone tried to say that, you know, we're misappropriating money or not doing what we're supposed to do. I think that that's very unfair, especially if you're uneducated about what the council does and the city's decisions and initiatives. Maybe take the time, ask before you make crazy accusations like that. And I will say, I brought this up before and it actually happened in my district, so I'm really proud of it, but blinking stop signs, we incorporated one in front of Santiago High School as a lot of the students were demanding it, but I think that that's something we should start to look to do everywhere. It's just getting harder and harder to see people, especially when there's more than, you know, one or two lanes. And so I think having blinking stoplights, stop signs, I mean, sorry, stop signs. We have them in certain areas of the city and I complained about it and I know that we finally got one on the east end. So I think we just need to start looking at how do we slowly transition that for the entire city, especially where it's, you know, there's so much parking that you can't see where the stop sign and the crosswalk begins or ends. I think we should definitely look into that. Lastly, I'd like to share that I attended the groundbreaking for Sabroso's second location earlier today. I'm very excited. I have always joked since I was elected that I wanted a tequila bar in District Six and we're finally getting one, so I feel like I've done a good job. I want to thank the Sabroso family. They're just such an amazing family, amazing restaurant, amazing food. They're so deserving to have this kind of time to shine and expand and I hope that they become a focal point in District Six for years to come and hopefully they can get some really cool murals out there to draw attention and have folks come and take their Instagrammable moment pictures and really get highlighted. We know that they've drawn a lot of attention for us through the Food Network and so I'm just so happy for them. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Well, city manager, Lisa Kim.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Just a couple of updates. Thank you, council member Delvin, related to the Navigation Center. I'm pleased to report we are currently housing thirty-nine clients. We're nearly fifty percent to our eighty-five shelter beds that's available. And a bit of good news, we had one particular client that received case management services and has elected to leave our Navigation Center to be with her sister. So we're making progress and I'm happy to report that to the council. As it relates to this weekend, July thirteenth, we have our 2024 Home Buyer Day that's hosted at our CMC, our Community Meeting Center. The event will, will run from ten AM to two PM and it's really to promote home, first-time home buyers in our city. And we welcome all of our future and current home buyers to come and learn about all the resources that's available in our community, including Garden Grove through our Economic Development and Housing Department. They have oversee, administer our first-time home buyer program and that provides some down payment assistance to, to our first-time home buyers. So I look forward to seeing participants attend that event. And lastly, we are going dark at our next July twenty-third meeting and we will be returning to session at our August thirteenth meeting. Thank you.
General counsel, any need for closed session, anything to report out?
No, Mayor, nothing for me. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. With that, we will stand adjourned. So thank you, everyone, and enjoy the rest of your evening.